...order if I could ask everybody to please stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, welcome everybody. It's always a pleasure to have one of these meetings with such a large crowd. We're glad that you really came out to see us today, to hear about all the wonderful things that we have going on in the high schools. Let's see. Okay, first I want to appoint Secretary Pro Tem today, so we're all set. And we'll review the agenda today. We have educational presentations. We're going to recognize both some students and staff. We certainly look forward to that. President's report, updates from our student school board representatives, superintendent's report. We'll have an invitation for public comment. I certainly hope all of you came with something to say.[67.45][67.45](laughter) And I will say that we'll limit you to three minutes, okay? So at that rate, we should certainly be out of here by morning. The consent vote agenda, which was reviewed earlier in the month in committee. We will have updates from the Program and Personnel Committee, Facilities and Finance Committee, no Property Committee update. I believe there is a seat all update, correct?
Right.
Okay. Nothing from the Illinois Association of School Boards, and then we will convene an executive session following our normal agenda. All right, anything else?
(inaudible)
Yeah, right. Always forget that. All right, roll call, please.
Steven Arthur.
Here.
Allison Belli-Polly.
Here.
Pat Green.
Here.
Lynn Munster.
Here.
Ellen Maurer.
Here.
Okay, so we note Steven Arthur and Ellen Maurer absent for the record. All right, let's start with our education presentations.
Well, thank you, Pat. I would ask at this time John Gilliam to stand in front of the board. And joining John, I would ask that former Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction, Assistant Principal for Curriculum and Instruction, and LHS Math Department Chair Deb Larson join John. And John, if you want to turn toward us just a little bit. And then Jim Whittington, former and first principal at Vernon Hills High School, and of course, current VHHS Principal Dr. Ellen Swick. VHHS Principal Dr. Ellen Swick will retire at the end of the 2013-14 school year, bringing her stellar career as an educator to an end. Her commitment, dedication, and leadership at VHHS have successfully built upon the Cougar legacy of excellence in academics, the fine arts, activities, and athletics. Under Ellen's leadership, VHHS has earned recognition as the United States Department of Education Blue Ribbon School, as one of the top 2% of all United States high schools, and as one of the top 1% of all Illinois high schools. Just as importantly, she has further developed a unique sense of VHHS family that is passionate about ensuring student growth, increasing student achievement, and caring for students and staff. When her time to retire finally arrives, Ellen will certainly be missed by VHHS and the D-128 family. To provide a coherent, meaningful, and stable transition from Ellen to the next VHHS principal, we recently completed the VHHS principal search, interview, and hiring process. During that process, a representative stakeholder interview team, including district and building administrators, teachers, support staff, students, and parents, provided me with overwhelmingly and unanimously positive feedback regarding John Gilliam as a candidate for the VHHS principal position. The interview team simply validated what I knew already. John Gilliam was the people's choice and the only choice to lead and take VHHS to the next level. At the February 25th Board meeting, I enthusiastically recommended and the board unanimously approved the hiring of John Gilliam as the next and third principal at Vernon Hills High School. John will begin his new duties on July 1st, 2014, following Ellen's retirement. John earned his Bachelor of Science degree from Taylor University with a major in mathematics and secondary education, a Master of Arts degree in educational leadership from Northern Illinois University, and is currently scheduled to complete his doctoral degree in educational leadership from Concordia University in the coming months. John has demonstrated excellence in his work in District 128, at LHS, and at VHHS since he joined the district as a mathematics teacher and coach in the early 90s. Since then, John has excelled as a teacher and a leader with a focus on ensuring student growth and increasing student achievement, developing administrators and teachers, and caring for students and staff, among others. In his initial leadership positions, John first served as the LHS Mathematics Department Supervisor, and then in the same position at Vernon Hills High School when the school opened. Recognizing his outstanding leadership ability, John was promoted as VHHS Assistant Principal in 1999, and then elevated to Associate Principal in 2011. John has made a significant and identifiable difference for students and staff in each one of his leadership positions. The Board and District Administration are aware that John has been private -- let me start again. The Board and District Administration are aware that John has been actively recruited by a number of high-profile Chicago-area districts for the high school principal position over the past few years. Although John could have easily left the district to pursue those excellent opportunities, he chose to remain at VHHS as an assistant and then associate principal and continue to serve the students and staff at VHHS. This is but one measure of John's deep commitment to VHHS and D-128. It gives me great honor and pleasure to present you to an outstanding educator and excellent leader, my colleague and my friend, John Gilliam, the new principal at Vernon Hills High School.[402.69][402.69](applause) Before we let you say a few words, Dr. Swick, would you like to make some comments about John?
I don't think there was anybody more happier than me than, I don't know, how long have you lived in Vernon Hills now, John?
Three years.
So, three and a half years. But the best day for me was when John came into my office about three and a half years ago and said -- because I had seen all these high schools coming after John to be a principal of these districts. And when he walked in and said, "I'm moving my family to Vernon Hills and I'm staying at Vernon Hills," and that was really, I was just thrilled when he gave me that news. And I am thrilled today and this past month, you know, I just heard how well you did in the interview process, which I knew you would be great. And I just so enjoyed working with you. I tell people the last couple of years, it feels like we have -- I have two grade assistant principals, and you're going to see that tonight, but we've really, it's like we've had two principals at Vernon Hills High School, because we work so well together, the three of us. And I just feel like we've worked side by side. People keep talking about transition, transition. I'm like, really? Nothing's going to change, because the three of us, that's just how we work together. We work side by side as colleagues, and I so respect their opinion on everything that we decide to do. So, I know John's going to do a great job. He's going to take Vernon Hills to the next level, and I'm just so thrilled that he's going to be our third principal at Vernon Hills High School. Congratulations, John.[506.18][506.18](applause)
Well, I certainly appreciate the kind words. Thank you, Dr. Lee, immensely, and Dr. Swick. I appreciate everything you've said and for all the years. I can't tell you how pleased I am to be here in this position tonight. Those of you who know me know how much I love Vernon Hills, Vernon Hills High School. So, to be standing here at this moment is really immeasurably fantastic. So, thank you. I want to say a special thanks to the Board of Education, not only for your support of our school and what we've done over the years, but specifically your support of me. It's been terrific, and I am really quite grateful. I consider this to be both an honor and a great responsibility to be the next principal of Vernon Hills High School. And I promise you that I will work tirelessly to make sure that you continue to be proud of this school and what it does for District 128. A few weeks ago, as Ellen and Brenda said, I went through an interview process, and through the process was asked what my vision of leadership for this school is. And there just, I gave a fairly lengthy answer, but there are a couple of things I wanted to touch on. And one, the first is this, that as a principal and as a school, we will always remember and honor our past. And I want to say to Dr. Whittington, our first principal, he was on the interview committee that hired me to be the math department head at Libertyville High School, and I was honored enough to serve as his math department head at Vernon Hills High School. And so, your leadership early on was tremendous, and we will always be indebted to you. So, thank you. And then, of course, to Dr. Swick, as she often says, of other people, she bleeds blue and silver. And she has been an amazing leader over the years, and like she alluded to, we have been a really high-functioning team, if I do say so myself, over these years. And I'm grateful to you, Ellen. You're a tremendous leader and a better friend. So, thank you. And then the second thing that I wanted to just mention that I talked about in the interview was that we have work to do. I said that my goal is to improve the now. And Vernon Hills, as you know, in 13 short years has done just tremendous things. The students have accomplished innumerable honors and all deserved, but there's more to do. And I'm excited about that, but probably most excited that I don't have to do that by myself. I have a tremendous team, a fantastic group, and I want to just mention four of them quickly. The first you already met, those of you that were here, is my family, and my lovely wife, Angie, and my four kids, Maddie, Cole, Cooper, and Grace. They complete me in a lot of ways, and so they will partner with me through this journey, and I'm excited for that. Then you're looking at some of the most amazing staff in the world, I'm assuming. I haven't traveled much of the world, but I gotta believe it is.[743.69][743.69](laughter) You know, from Dr. Swick to the Assistant Principal of the Year standing behind me, to some amazing instructional leaders that are here tonight, and teachers that I can't wait for my own kids to walk into their classrooms. That's pretty important. And then a support staff that is second to none. So, the staff here is just, is and is going to continue to be a great team member. Thirdly, the community. I see a lot of friends and a lot of parents who have poured much of their heart and soul into this building. I think a hallmark of Vernon Hills High School is how the community jumped into this place when it was built. And we won't forget that. We'll continue to build with it, and I'm excited to work with the members of the community. And then finally, last but not least, is the students. And I'm glad the girls' basketball team came here tonight to support me. I appreciate that.[805.11][805.11](laughter) But, you know, them and the other 1,300 kids in this place are fantastic. And I would do just about anything to make sure that they're both safe and successful, and that leave this place well-prepared for whatever it is that they endeavor to do next. So, that's all I have. I appreciate you being here, and I appreciate this night. So, thank you.[830.12][830.12](applause)
I guess the only thing I'd add is, you know, when the kids are younger, they always want to go to dad's office. Is that really true in his case?[877.12][877.12](laughter) I'll find out next homecoming parade when we're riding on a float together. Okay. Student recognition.
Dr. Fleming.
I'm pleased and honored to recognize a number of students and a number of student groups from athletes this month. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Scott, and she's going to be the first to introduce coaches and players.
Good evening. I have the honor tonight to introduce two legendary coaches who will introduce some of our very special boy swimmers. First, I have Mr. John Fischel, also known affectionately to many as Fish. With a name like that, what other choice did he have but to become a swim coach? You can join me up here, Mr. Fischel. Prior to LHS, John served as head boys and girls coach at Highland Park, where he was named an IHSA Sectional Coach of the Year, coaching a team that won state top-10 finish and having coached two individual state champs. Coming to Libertyville in 1994, he has served as aquatics director, freshman boys swim coach, and assistant athletic director. One of John's proudest moments at LHS came two years ago when the JV boys team won the Prairie Lake Junior Varsity Championship. John measures the success of the freshman and JV team by the number of former JV swimmers who contribute at the varsity level before they graduate, and I think he will have a few of them to acknowledge here tonight. Next, we're thrilled to have Bob Groseth with us for this first season as LHS Boys Swimming and Diving Head Coach. Bob comes to us with a long history of coaching excellence and accompanying accolades. His first head coaching position was at Fenwick High School in Oak Park, where his teams won seven consecutive Catholic League Championships and four national Catholic Championships. During his stay at Fenwick, Bob produced 28 All-American swimmers. Bob then moved to the collegiate level and coached at Cincinnati, Tulane, Iowa State, and most recently Northwestern. Along with many other accolades, Bob twice earned the Big Eight Coach of the Year and was three-time Big Ten Coach of the Year. How did we get a coach of this caliber to come to LHS, you might ask? I asked that same question myself. I hear the same buzz was going around the IHSA State Meet this season. Bob may or may not give you that answer, but I'm sure he's going to tell you about the spectacular performance of our LHS swimmers. Thanks, guys.[1032.75][1032.75](applause)
Thank you. Yeah, I kind of slid it into this job. The former coach took another job, and I was just leaving as Executive Director of the College Swim Coaches Association, and this job was open, so I applied. I'd always, people asked me when I got out of coaching at Northwestern what I wanted to do, and I said, "I, you know, I think I'm going to get back into high school coaching." That's what got me into the coaching business. That's what, or my passion was, and I'm excited to be here at Libertyville. And first of all, I want to introduce the four boys that went to the state meet and finished fourth in the state this year. This is the highest finish for Libertyville ever, and they're all going to be returning, and so we're going to be moving up from there, we hope. And that's where our goal is going to be. So, I want to introduce the boys. First, Justin Foo.[1099.88][1099.88](applause)
Matt Harrington.
Atticus Rush.
And their parents are here, so I'd like their parents to stand up and be recognized.[1130.01][1130.01](applause) And just a couple of words. Number one, I think that the support from the family, you know, coming back from the college ranks, you forget how, what a big difference the support of families and communities make for the success of these swimmers. Obviously, their parents have invested a lot in them, but this school district has invested a lot in providing the facilities, both at Libertyville and the new facility here at Vernon Hills, that have enabled these boys to be successful. They've gone through the CATS program that takes advantage of both of the facilities here, and it just goes to show what can happen when you invest in bricks and mortar and get some good coaching, that a lot of things can happen, and we hope that we can continue to do this in the future and, you know, bring glory to the school district. Thanks for your support from the school board, and thanks for the parents.[1203.16][1203.16](applause)
team or a club already tonight. So, if Alex could come up, Alex Zigniga, come on up. This is Alex.[1265.71][1265.71](applause) Last year, I attended the state diving finals, and Alex just barely missed getting up on the podium. And I remember seeing him in the hallways and saying, "Alex, we're going to get you All-State. I know you're going to work hard, and I'm just so proud of you that we're going to get you up on that wall of fame due to your ninth-place finish in diving, and we're really proud of you. Congratulations."[1290.74][1290.74](applause) Alex's parents are also here tonight. If they could stand and be recognized. There's Alex's dad. Congratulations.[1299.83][1299.83](laughter) Next, I have the honor of welcoming Jerry Micali to the podium. Jerry is our head wrestling coach, and I just want to also echo what Dr. Scott said, is that the time that all our coaches put in after school, after teaching a full day in the classroom, it's just amazing the hard work and dedication that our coaches give to our kids extra outside of the classroom. So, at this time, if Jerry Micali could come up and talk about his athlete, congratulations.[1343.24][1343.24](applause)
Hello? Oh, girls' basketball team. That was a great game against Montini. I almost had a heart attack. I just, you guys out hustled them, and they were out coached. So, nice job. Real quick, Jordan Reich took third in state, and I'll tell you, Louis, you can come up here, Jordan, and we'll talk about you. Took third in state, but you've got to know something about Jordan. When he came in as a freshman, he weighed 84 pounds in the lightest, you come closer, I'm not going to.[1374.13][1374.13](laughter) The lightest weight class was 103, and we kept telling him, "Everything's going to be okay." And then last year, he was 95 pounds. Things were looking better. And then this year, he made it to 106, but what we did was, we wrestled him at 13 all year, and even 120 sometimes. We kept him under the radar at 106. He had a record of 46 and 6, and his six losses were at 120 and 113. And we put him in five tournaments, only at 106. He won all five mid-states tournaments with 43 teams. He won conference. He won the Lyden Tournament, because you have to go back to Lyden. He won the conference. He won regionals. He won sectionals. He lost one match at 106 by a point, and a guy he lost to an uptaken state. But here, this is his character. He came back, and he hammered everybody in the wrestle backs. And he wrestled a guy who was ranked from Montini, and he pinned him in the first period, and that's Jordan Reich. So, I'm very proud of you.[1428.65][1428.65](applause)
Congratulations, Jordan. I also echo the heart attack that Mr. Micali had. I think I was in the stands having one also. Coach Brettner, that was one of the most exciting games I think I've ever been to, was the Montini game, and just the whole experience of being downstate again. It's just a wonderful experience for the girls and for the community. And we really loved how the community came out and supported the girls. So, at this time, I'd like to introduce Coach Brettner to introduce our second-place girls' basketball
We had a really nice season this year. We finished 31-3, which breaks any record we even had last year, that we had a real good year last year. We started, we won our own Thanksgiving tournament, which we had done before, but then we started doing some things that we hadn't done before, and we won the Mundaline Christmas Tournament, Winter Tournament, that we'd only finished fifth. It was our best finish ever. And then, we really represented our prairie division very well by winning the conference championship. And in 13 years of our conference, the prairie side has never won the conference championship game. We won by one point against Zion Benton. Great game. And then in the playoffs, we were hoping to get downstate again. Nothing's guaranteed, but they played very, very well, got downstate by beating some really good teams playing very tough. And then, we beat the three-time state championship, defending state championship team in Montini, which was referenced by a couple of people already. And it was a great game with overtime, and it was just a fantastic experience. And unfortunately, we lost the next day, but we did finish runner-up. And what I like to tell people is, these girls did such a great job. They won with class, dignity, grace, all of those things. And you sometimes expect that, but the next day when we lost, we lost with class dignity and grace as well. It's just a great group of kids. Other parents are here, so, parents, thank you. Thanks for coming tonight. Thanks for all your support. Wave so we know who you are. And I'd like to introduce the girls at this point. Monica Baumann.
Stay there, stay there, crutches. There you go. All right.[1595.21][1595.21](laughter) Ree Baumann.
Mary Beth Swanson, not here tonight. She had another engagement.
Katie Brettman.
Casey Fernbach.
Kristen Guyomi.
Shannon Healy.
Kelly Hall, not here. She'll have something else going on too.
Katherine Kuzwar.
Amy Novahaki.
Haley Lieberman.
Mia Puskin.
Sydney Smith.
Tori Smith, not here, and Warren Webb.
Why don't we just slide over a little bit, so she doesn't have to.
This is like the pictures on Steve, right?
(inaudible)
Thank you, Brad.
Thank you.
member? Dr. Swick is going to make that presentation.
Yes, and I'm going to ask the girls' second-place basketball team to stay here for this recognition. So, if you guys could hang out a little bit longer, that'd be great. Come on up, Mrs. Ockett. Stand right here next to me. Vernon Hills High School Assistant Principal, well, I should just start off by saying, this is an AP Principal's night here, I think. But Vernon Hills High School Assistant Principal Jean Ockett was named Assistant Principal of the Year by the Lake Region of the Illinois Principals Association in January. And now, we just learned a couple of weeks ago that she has been named the 2013-14 Illinois Assistant Principal of the Year singly for the entire state of Illinois.[1765.11][1765.11](applause) The honor sponsored by Horace Mann and the IPA recognizes assistant principals who have demonstrated a positive impact on their students and learning community. The Assistant Principal of the Year Award was selected from a pool of regional nominees provided by the 21 regions of the IPA. Jean will be recognized at the IP's Annual Assistant Principals and Principals Conference in 2014 and will receive a 1,000 Principals and Principals Conference in 2014 and will receive a $1,000 honorarium. So often, our assistant principals are unsung heroes. Jean Ockett encompasses all Vernon Hills High School stands for. She is a strong listener, is loyal and dedicated. I love what she said to the newspapers. "At VHS, we have worked hard at creating an environment that is a caring, happy place to learn. Our staff loves to work here and students respect and enjoy their teachers." Jean Ockett has simply been instrumental in the creation of this environment at Vernon Hills High School. It has been my honor to work with her. Congratulations, Jean, on this well-deserved award.
Before you all go, thank you so much again and echo what the coaches just said, your commitment to your young people and your support of the staff here at Vernon Hills High School and District 128. We have a great school district because we have great partnerships. And one of those partnerships is between the parents and the schools. And we don't take that for granted. So I want you to stop before you go and give yourselves a round of applause. Thank you very much.
Okay, on a windy, snowy, cold, blustery night, that felt good.
No, we can't.
No, that was really, that was awesome. Really, President's Report, nothing specific to report other than this is our last board meeting before the upcoming elections. So I would encourage the people in the public get out and vote. And we look forward to that. Student School Board reps, who would like to go first?
I guess we'll start with Alex Hess. So spring sports are in full swing. Many teens would love to go outside to practice, but for the most part, everyone's still stuck inside until this weather changes, hopefully soon. Many teens are traveling out of state to places like Arizona and Florida over spring break for some preseason games and training, which should be a lot of fun. In regards to fine arts, this year's spring play is Much Ado About Nothing, and the cast has already started their rehearsals. Orchestra's performances are last weekend and were a hit as always. Orchestra has their winter performance this Wednesday at 7:30 PM and will be traveling to Cuba over spring break. And the LHS choir is scheduled to travel to Spain over winter break. Lots of traveling going on with the different groups. Student Council is hosting its first annual Mr. LHS Pageant on Friday, April 19th at 7:00 PM. About a dozen junior and senior boys will compete in several events such as formal wear, vacation wear, talent and interview. Admission will be $3 and proceeds will go to a charity that we have not yet determined. The official theme for prom is Suit and Tie, which carries on the tradition of having the theme, the song. And the venue will be decorated in 1920s style. Feather boas, a magician, photo booths and a dance floor are sure to make for an unforgettable night. And the Community Service Club Interact is sponsoring a drive for the Glass Flipper Project and is asking students to bring in gently-used dresses and shoes for girls who might not otherwise be able to afford dresses for prom. And this drive runs through the end of the week. And finally, Writers Week is April 1st to the 5th and will feature various student writers, poets, playwrights, novelists and more in the auditorium throughout the day.
This is again for Libertyville, I go chronologically. Two Fridays ago, Libertyville had their academic challenge competition here at Vernon Hills. In the unlimited division, Libertyville took third place. And although the team itself didn't qualify for nationals, we had, I'm sorry, for state, we had three students qualify for state as individuals. Then that same weekend was the ICA State Debate Tournament for JV and novice debaters. We had one junior varsity, LD debater take the semifinal position and another one take the quarterfinal position. Then this past weekend, the IHSA State Debate Tournament, which is for varsity members, was held in Illinois Wesley University. We had two octafinalists, two teams of octafinalists. And of those four students, one of them was actually selected to the all-state debate team. So congratulations to Eric. Also, Academic Decathlon was on Saturday at Chicago State University and our team, Libertyville, took fourth place. And we had two people score in the top three in their respective divisions. So that's everything from Libertyville and then from Vernon Hills.
Athletics, all winner scores are officially over. It was a successful season for all. As most of us know and we all now saw, the girls' basketball team took second in state for the second year in a row. And Alex says she got the chance to watch the semifinal game, which was very exciting. And congratulations again to those girls. They had their, or Vernon Hills had their winner sports awards night last Tuesday to honor all the winner athletes. Spring sports are officially up and running. A few sports have already had several games or meets, but the weather is challenging the typical spring schedule. In regards to fine arts, there is an orchestra concert this Thursday, March 21st. Their spring play is Almost Main. They held auditions two weeks ago and have since begun rehearsals. The play centers on several individuals, individual love stories all rolled into one. And orchestra's rehearsals will continue throughout the spring until the show in early May.
Vernon Hills Y's team, same competition on Friday, but different division. They took first place in the sectional competition, so congratulations to them. Their senior class unit council has been planning their annual Mr. Cougar event for next month. So same thing as Mr. LHS. Several senior boys signed up and the contestants will be announced tomorrow. Students at the DECA competition attended state last weekend in Decatur, Illinois. Although no one qualified for nationals, several contestants scored in their top 10 in their divisions. This week, student council is holding their exec board elections for next year. And seniors of the Pilates winners were announced last week. Winning seniors have been taking pictures for the yearbook during this week. And I think this is from Libertyville and Vernon Hills. Everyone's really ready for spring break. So that's everything to the students.
Okay, great job, Hess. Thanks. Superintendent's Report.
Okay, we're going to start with good news tonight. Let's keep the good news rolling. The following VHS students were named March Cougar Class Act Award winners. Jessica Lobber, Selena Moda, Daniel Liebovitz, Kyra Erlich, Alina Lahaki, Gustavo Maros, Macaulay Pacala, Nathan Kessler, Trenton Fuller and Annie Gomcian. The following LHS students were named February Students of the Month. Kate Cussera, Linnea Stein, Griffin Brunz, Jacqueline Ovasapian, Mara Dragon, Max Frelander, Keegan Hurley, Gian Marco Guero, David Stone, James He, Tim Miller, Adam Pozdrow and Alex Carter. Nine LHS Fall Athletic Teams qualified for the IHSA Team Academic Achievement Award by achieving a cumulative grade point average of 3.0 or higher during the 2012-13 school year. The teams receiving this award were the Boys Cross Country Team, Girls Cross Country, Football, Boys Golf, Girls Golf, Boys Soccer, Girls Swimming and Diving, Girls Tennis and Girls Volleyball. On Saturday, March 9th, LHS Photography Students participated in the Visual Image Photography Fourth Annual Photography Show at VIP's Wheeling Studio. Ten students submitted a total of ten images to the juried exhibition. The exhibition, featuring photography from 14 area high school, was judged by three professional photographers. Sophomore Ethan Geerdorf's digital photo, Onyx, won second place in show. Junior Bailey Schmidt's digital image, Mooney, and Senior Jessica Damogala's piece, Cirque Delight, took honorable mentions. VHS Senior Tiffany Doe won a national silver medal for the piece she submitted to the 2013 National Scholastic Arts and Writing Awards. Her graphic novel, Ends, was entered in the comic category. The Scholastic National Silver Medal is one of the highest levels of achievement on the national level. Tiffany is planning to accept her award in person at the national ceremony at Carnegie Hall in New York City during the weekend of May 30th. We'll have to see if we can join her for that. The LHS Academic Decathlon Team finished fourth out of 45 teams in the state competition held Saturday, March 13th at Chicago State University. Team members are Adam Gerbowski, Maggie August, John Shuler, Nishad Fudkay, Nick Sarah Kia, Jack Mershen, Brian Kite and John Alath Sveed. Nishad Fudkay finished first in mathematics and Bryant Kite finished first in science. The team is coached by Mark Busing. The following District 128 student artists received Best of Show Awards at the March 15th North Suburban Conference Art Show. From LHS, Kate Urecki, Kylie McCormick, Adam Blythe, Dom Brunkow, April DeJean, Rick Pop, Daniel Molnar, Katie Simpson, Lily Nader and Zach Engfer. From LHS, Barry Arana, Jacob Baling, Tiffany Doe, Ann Hall, Roselda James, Amara Krantz, Jean Lynn, Erica Pipo, Cassandra Sandoval and Olivia Weaver. So congratulations to all those students. And one note before we move away from good news, I'll tell you, it's always a great pleasure to watch the kids compete downstate. And I had the opportunity to spend two days down at the University of Illinois. In Champaign-Urbana, I had Assembly Hall watching the state wrestling tournament. We had six wrestlers from Libertyville and two wrestlers from Vernon Hills. And the kids just did a great job down there. And most people don't realize that when the kids wrestle in the finals down there, they're wrestling in front of about 12,000 people. Illinois is one of the biggest wrestling states in the United States and it's a big deal. And it was a pleasure to be with Ellen and the Vernon Hills staff and parents again to watch the girls down at ISU. That was just a great game to watch the day before. And certainly, the state championship game was a lot of fun. So congratulations to all of the kids. And I would have went to state swimming, but apparently there is a long waiting list to get in the pool and new cheer because it is not big enough to handle the crowd that would like to see the state swimming meet. So one additional thing that I want to put up for the camera, Stuart, can you shoot that for me, picture? Some of you may remember former Board Representative Kate Lee. I was in Springfield last week, meeting with some key legislators on important legislation and also attending committee meetings and testifying on behalf of some bills and against others. And in a Capitol with about 10,000 lobbyists running through it, Kate Lee caught me from across the Capitol, saw me and ran me down. And Kate is a freshman at Northwestern, of course, majoring in operatic singing. And I asked Kate, "Wow, it's really great to see you, but what are you doing in Springfield?" And she was in Springfield with the president of Northwestern University, testifying in a legislative committee for them to maintain funding on one of the scholarships that Kate gets to attend Northwestern University. And she told me the night before, they came down and had dinner with all of the legislators from the Senate and House who were Northwestern graduates, stayed overnight and testified the next day. So I had sent Pat this picture earlier because Pat spent time with Kate in our monthly board meetings. But she is doing wonderful and the same, always enthusiastic Kate. But Ellen, I think, commented when I sent her the picture, "What next from Kate Lee, you know, down in Springfield, testifying with the president of Northwestern University?" So I thought you'd enjoy seeing that picture. So that concludes the good news report tonight. The Board will note, we have one donation acknowledgement tonight, and this is Mr. Jeff Gearing. And Mr. Gearing donated $100 to the Libertyville High School Best Buddies Program, which will be used to support that program. So we're very thankful of that support. The Board will note, you have one FOIA request in your package this week. And the next thing on our docket this evening is we have a, we received a per capita library grant from the state, the Illinois Standards for School Library Media Centers. And this is almost like kind of a juried award. There's different areas in this award and then you are ranked in those areas. Our media centers ranked exemplary in all of the areas. And we'll continue to receive this media center grant. So great work to our library staff on their work with that. And the next thing from the superintendent tonight is we have our annual renewal of our IHSA memberships for both Vernon Hills High School and Libertyville High School. And we will need a motion to, and a vote to adopt our membership for the next year.
Is there a motion?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Aye.
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 Motion carries.
And Pat, that concludes the superintendent's report.
Okay, thanks very much. Anybody from the public wish to speak? Okay, seeing none. Next, the consent vote agenda is listed. It was reviewed in committee last week. If I could ask for a motion to approve the consent vote agenda, please. So move?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Aye.
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 All right, motion carries. Program and Personnel Committee, member Lundsted.
Hey, our first item on the agenda is the 2013-14 Staffing Recommendations.
Hey, Dr. Fleming has some outline material for you to follow along with. We'll be able to move through this pretty rapidly while we're passing that out to board members. Just want to remind the Board again and review the process with you. The process starts at the building level with counselors signing up students for their classes for next year, including incoming freshmen. And after that process, when we have raw numbers at the building level, then both Marina and Ellen's teams start to look at those numbers. And we have optimum class sizes in our district, not maximum class sizes, but suggested optimums, that we like to try and keep class sizes at. And they begin to do some math with the numbers to determine the number of sections we need in each department. Following that initial work, the department chairs meet with the administrative teams and the building principals to massage those numbers and look them over and make additional adjustments. And then we spend roughly three days together at district office, we being Dr. Fleming, the building principals, John Gilliam, who does master scheduling at Vernon Hills, and Ole Stevens. Libertyville, along with Kathleen Witt, who comes in and joins us for special education. And then the team updates me and I come in as I need to come into those meetings. They further massage those numbers and work very collaboratively together to determine our staffing for the following year. So it's a very extensive process that we utilize. And you have a summary here this evening. I would ask you first to move to page two. That's the second page. And this page is actually our staffing needs for this year broken down in, it's this one, I'm sorry. Yeah, I guess that's page three of the cover. Thanks, Alex. That's correct. Okay, so in a historical review for 2012, we have no additional staffing request for this particular school year, which means we use none of the contingency allocation that I asked the Board for over and above our staffing array for move-ins in the summer or overcrowding that we have in a specific section moving forward. Our new request for this year for certified staff will put us up 2.1 FTE, just full-time equivalency. And the dollar numbers that are generated there are based on an average teacher salary of $80,000. And of course, we have our teachers with, that come in lower than that and occasionally teachers that will come in higher than that in high needs. If you add the contingency to that, that's 1.0 over and above the staffing array. And so the total cost for the budget, if our contingency would be used, would be 3.1. But our history over the past few years is we do a very good job in anticipating and staffing and we rarely have to use the contingency. So in actuality, our total cost for the budgeting purposes for next year, if contingency is not used, is 2.1. Special education is driven by a separate staffing process and as the Board is aware, really based on a student's IEP and the needs of those students. Both our returning sophomores, juniors and seniors and our incoming freshmen. And so the needs that we have there, the staffing needs are driven directly by the IEP and were required by federal legislation to meet the student needs. So all in with our staffing requests this year would be a 4.4 FTE or roughly $352,000. Now, the good news, if you flip back to page two, which I did remember this time, I think, these are actual numbers that produce some savings for us over the cost of the year. Because the bottom line with staffing is not how many FTE were up or down, but the cost of that staffing. And as the Boards are aware, there are many factors that And as the Boards are aware, there are many factors that go into that. When teachers retire after a long career in the district, they have a high salary and they're often replaced with teachers that are younger and have less seniority and the cost is much lower. So our estimated certified salaries this year was about $28,900,000. Go to line B, our retirees were $626,000. So that brought our staffing cost for this year to about $28,274. If you add the estimated replacement salaries for new personnel, that's about $325,000. And then go to the next line, if you add the total estimated certified salaries then, we're at about $28,599. Okay, if you go to line F, total estimated dollar savings, if you take A, the first line minus E, are roughly $301,000 over the last year. So even though our staffing is up, our costs are down. The next line, G, is our CEDO take-back. As you remember, we're taking back three additional CEDO positions this year and that results in some additional savings for us of about $105,000. And then Title I grants used to supplement salaries, that's our Title I money, is roughly about $51,300 this year. And that number, it fluctuates from year to year. We'll have to see what federal sequestration does to that. So that means actually our staffing in raw numbers is $457,336,000 less than it was the year before, even though our staffing is higher. So what's the total savings? If you take page three and subtract, or page two and subtract it from three, our savings year-over-year staffing-wise is $105,336,000 for next year. Go ahead, Alex.
I just want to point out here, this 4.4, that includes the contingency, which is under the rule of use, so you could actually subtract $80,000 from that, so it's a $108,000 savings if we don't use the contingency. This is just all.
Does it include the CEDO too?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, CEDO, the CEDO is in there. So we're up in special education, based on student need. We're up 484 course requests at Vernon Hills, as I pointed out at our committee meeting last week, which is a great problem to have because in analysis of those additional course requests, we have a number of students who are electing or opting out of study halls to take classes instead of being in study hall. We did have a slight dip, I think, in John's analysis, John Gilliam's analysis, in course requests last year and we're really back up to kind of our historical level there. And LHS is down just a bit this calendar year. So I want to compliment once again the work that Ellen and Marina have done with their teams at the building level, being very mindful of having good economy of scale when we're doing the staffing. Also, our optimum class sizes, so we keep our class sizes at a place that we believe our kids can learn most effectively and teachers can teach. And then also, our district staffing group has done a great job working together to crunch the numbers moving forward. So what I would ask the Board to do tonight is to approve our staffing recommendations and that would include an additional 1.0 FTE for use without having to come back to the Board. And of course, I always report to you when, if and when we have to use that FTE. And I would ask Al or Marina or Ellen, if you have anything you want to add to the conversation tonight. You guys did a great job for us.
Should D be 352? Is this the number from?
Should D be 352?
Is it this, is this what we're picking at here?
Should D, Alex, the question is, should D be 352?
Is it the number from the next page to the bar?
Uh, no.
Okay, that's just a good fact.
So A minus B gives us the $28,274.
If we fired the five that are retired, we'd already estimate their salaries if we happened, and I couldn't say it from the 325. Subtract that from what we're currently paying those five members, we know that, so that's 6.6, 6.6 minus 3.25, which is 301,000.
Yeah, I got confused with replacement versus new. Excuse me.
So you're going to replace five that are retiring and then you're going to add 4.4?
Yes. Right?
Yes, yes, Pat. Including the contingency.
Yes.
No, that's a good question, Karen. Does that help?
I did.
Yeah, I just thought the numbers got hurt, but I misread it. Thank you.
And the 301, of course, would, you know, if you're following the numbers, if you're doing cross-checking, the 325 and the 4.4 is, or 352 is the hiring of the 4.4. Additional staff.
Right, right.
Over and above what we have right now.
Hey, just ground me, these two, these two columns, what's the difference between those two?
Is this first semester or this is second?
Oh, okay.
Pat's question, just so you know, when you get into the detail and back, there's two columns under each year and the first column is first semester and the second column is second semester. And we break them out because we have some semester classes, obviously.
So it's a pretty significant increase in Vernon Hills.
Yeah, 484 course requests.
Oh, these are course requests.
Course requests, yeah.
Of course, not students. Oh my gosh, if we had, yeah, if we had 440.
But still, it's a lot.
Yeah, it is. It is, and it's a great problem to have.
Considering a teacher may be responsible for paying the $120 students, $430,000 course requests is $3, almost.
And I think historically, the good track here for us over probably at least the last five years, when we've really probably tracked the specific translated dollars more closely, that's a lot of wind, is that year-over-year, regardless of what our staffing pattern is, we have, because of the number of retirees that we've had specifically and ups and downs in special education, we've actually been able to save some money in terms of the staffing pattern. And this year is a great example. We're up 4.4 and we're still going to be, you know, just a little over $100,000 less in staffing cost. So that's a, that's a good dynamic. Okay, any other comments? Any other questions?
Just related to this, what is the latest in Springfield on the potential increasing the math requirements and stuff?
Well, Pat, I will tell you, I was, Pat and I were talking a little bit before when I was in Springfield on Thursday, I actually was in House Elementary and Secondary Education Committee to testify on that particular bill. The bill is sponsored by Representative Michael Fortner, who is a, who's actually was my former mayor in West Chicago and is a great guy, but he's a physics professor at NIU and also has a statistics background. And Representative Fortner, in doing research about where the jobs are going to be in the future, has a great philosophical base for this bill and that is, most of the jobs are going to be generated out of STEM. Okay, so science, technology, engineering, and mathematics, of course, which is no surprise to any of us sitting at the table. Many of you work in that industry already or a related industry. So his philosophical base is very good there. The fallacy in terms of the bill that he proposed was to force all schools in the state to have a fourth year of a math requirement, when in fact, in suburban schools, particularly most of our schools, most of our kids are taking a fourth math class. But he put a caveat in his bill that would allow schools to offer applied math classes. So for example, a technology class where there was a mathematic component or they had to apply math and earn a math credit. The problem with that and where it becomes an unfunded mandate for public schools in Illinois is if we get grant credit for a math class, even if it's taught, for example, in the technology area, Jim, in your field of expertise, under MCLB requirements, that has to be a highly qualified math teacher teaching that class. So you either have to hire another math teacher, okay, to work with the technology teacher or you have to move the technology teacher out and hire a math teacher and there's no way around that. So I had a personal conversation with Representative Fortner for about 45 minutes after he presented his bill and we were allowed to testify and there were a number of superintendents down there at that time. But it's, it's a good example of a great idea that hasn't been processed out with superintendents and building principals at the point because we could have helped in terms of looking at that bill and the possibilities. Fortunately, there were a number of representatives on that committee who clearly saw that as a great idea, but not the right time. The Board is aware from our conversations with you that most of the public schools in Illinois are wrestling mightily with integrating Senate Bill 7 and the requirements of that, which has taken a lot of time and resources and basically overwhelmed at this point. So there were a number of legislators who recognized that and said, it's a great idea, but we need to look at this in two or three years when we have Senate Bill 7, you know, under our wing. And we also need to provide the local units of school districts flexibility before we mandate a requirement. Downstate, in Western Illinois, Eastern Illinois, and Downstate, the problem is, most of those high schools have six periods in their day where we have seven. So they have a good curriculum, but it's a very straightforward curriculum and not, not a lot of elective opportunities. So the problem they have is they don't have a technology class at that level to put applied math in it so they could earn a credit. So for them, it would mean they would have to create more math classes, i.e. hire more teachers. In the big context, and I'll leave you with this thought, we've all been following the news, but the day before, on the floor of the House and the Senate, they were reminded by the governor that the governor has recommended an additional $400 million of cuts in public education. That would be $1 billion almost over three years. So school districts are already wrestling financially and so those unfunded and underfunded mandates, even though they're great ideas, become catastrophic for local school districts that are trying to deal with the issues at hand. And Pat, that's probably more than you wanted to know.
No, that's good.
That's a, that's a good example of how those bills come about in Springfield.
Okay, good. Any other questions or comments? I don't think so. Actually, just one, with the huge increase in family and consumer science, one semester to the next, how do we even manage through that? That's.
We, what we needed to do is to, we've had to shift students, we've done some balancing due to that, to make it more equalized for teacher load. Yeah, good question.
That's a big, big difference.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions?
Sorry, the administration would recommend that you accept our staffing recommendations for the 2013-14 school year.
So moved.
Second? Any discussion? I'd just like to add my compliments to all of you guys and how you go through this. It's a very diligent process every year and, and I think we've really done a good job over the last couple of years of holding the line on staffing. So I know I'm very comfortable with these small additions this year with the enrollment changes. Okay, anybody else? All right, roll call, please.
Rudy?
Aye.
Lundsted?
Aye.
Ranser?
Aye.
Kelly Pollard?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries.
Okay, the next item is the RD5 educational tour request listed on your agenda.
These are the requests that point out what we're going to turn the time we have to officially.
Okay. Okay, I'm moving accept the tour request. Second? Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Lundsted?
Aye.
Ranser?
Aye.
Ranser?
Aye.
Kelly Pollard?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Okay, next is the Rising Star Program.
Rising Star Program is, it's the next student improvement program, is now called Rising Star. It needs Board approval, so we are asking for approval. This has to happen with Libertyville and the district because of our, where we sit with no child on the ground right now.
Okay.
So we just need to approve for?
Yeah, we, we need Board approval to file this with the state.
Okay.
By move, we give approval to file with the state, the Rising Star, participate in the Rising Star Program.
So move? Second? Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ranser?
Aye.
Ranser?
Aye.
Kelly Pollard?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Lundsted? Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, the next item are the annual employment recommendations listed for continuing employment and non-renewal recommendations.
This is our annual requirement that we notify, we reduce our part-time staff, we retain those that were asked back for the next year and those few that we would, we would say the end of the year, our probationary teachers.
Okay. Okay, I'm moving accept the employment recommendations.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ranser?
Aye.
Kelly Pollard?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Lundsted?
Aye.
Ranser?
Aye.
Okay, and the last item are the employment of employees, again, that we didn't have at our last.
Two change, one additional hire since our P and P meeting and then one change in retirement date for employees.
Okay, so we have a motion to accept the employment of employees.
So move? Second? Discussion? Roll call, please.
Kelly Pollard?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Lundsted?
Aye.
Ranser?
Aye.
Ranser?
Aye.
Okay, thanks very much. Facilities and Finance Committee, member Kelly Pollard.
Next thing, we have one bid recommendation for the LHS Studio Theater Life Control Deming. Jess, have you been able to give us a summary?
Yes, I'd like the Board to approve the base bid, alternate one and two from Associated Electrical Contractors in Woodstock, Illinois, in the amount of $132,242. That's to replace, the base bid is to replace the old dimmer control panel in the studio theater. Alternate number one is for the removal of existing electrical circuits, wiring and plugging scripts and the replacement of such. And alternate bid number two is to provide a new ETC panel box and also to wire that box. The bid is, includes $15,000 worth of contingency, so we don't use contingencies. The total will come in about $110,000, or $117,000, which we had put $110,000 in our capacity.
Do we have a motion for that?
So move? Second? Any discussion? All right, roll call, please.
Rudy?
Aye.
Lundsted?
Aye.
Ranser?
Aye.
Ranser?
Aye.
All right, motion carries.
And then the other, the Board is starting down a planning process to upgrade the infrastructure and facilities and keep the district current going forward. And just want to encourage the public to attend and participate in these discussions in our committee meetings. These discussions happen in detail at the committee meetings every, what, second Monday of every month and the public is encouraged to participate. You leave that set for F and F.
Okay, great.
Now, Pat, I would highlight one thing as well on the financial line. I just want to remind the public again that the Board voted recently to abate $4 million for next year, essentially keeping the tax rate flat. And although we tried to get that word out through the media, the media hasn't picked up on that story yet, but Mary and I are going to continue to keep working at that. But that is a big story and that's $6 million over two years. And the Board will continue to review our financial position, what's going on in the state and what's going on at the federal level on a year-by-year basis to make any future decisions. And the word abatement means that we're simply not going to take $4 million of the money that we would be allowed to under the current tax cap legislation and levy that was authorized by the Board earlier in the year.
Okay, thank you. Let's see, Property Committee, no update, CEDO.
Yeah, we had our quarterly governing board meeting in the last couple of weeks and much like what we do here, they had a student recognition, which was really fascinating. A young man who has autism, won a 2013 Outstanding Technology Award by being a high-end user of technology. He programmed this device to give himself a voice. He has trouble with speaking and he programmed this computer to be able to speak with various sentences. And it was really exciting to see him demonstrate that for us and will enable him to communicate more with the public as he's going out into the world and his parents are there to support him and have this recognized. So it's really very inspiring. The rest of the meeting was, we appointed a nominee committee for the governing board officers as well as the executive board members. And then the rest of it was spent, we broke into four different groups and then rotated an informational meeting that had us go around and hear about the services of benefit. And again, we moved from four different stations and had presentations to each one. So it was very interesting, and we'll be moving on to budget things at our next meeting.
Okay, great, thank you. Nothing from the Illinois Association of School Boards. So at this point, I'd like to move to executive session. Can I have a motion to move to executive session? There is no action following that, correct? Okay. Motion to...
Move, go to executive.
Second? Roll call, please.